You can email comments and questions to Milbrae Council Meetings at CI.Milbrae.CA.us. As we get started, I would like to go over a few ground rules to ensure proper decorum as this is our first time. During tonight's special city council meeting, the public can listen, but two-way communication other than email by the public to the city council will be limited to council members themselves and staff. For the council and staff on the phone, please direct comments and questions through me, and I will recognize you at the appropriate time. Everyone will have a chance to be heard and speak if desired, but we can only discuss the item on the agenda as that element of the Brown Act remains intact. Again, general public can participate in this meeting by emailing comments to Milbrae Council Meetings at CI.Milbrae.CA.us. And only comments about the agenda item, which is the declaration of emergency due to COVID-19 outbreak, will be allowed. All email comments received by 6:30 PM will be read aloud by the city clerk. As usual, in all city council meetings, comments will be limited to three minutes per comment. If more than ten comments are received, time shall be reduced. Although we welcome and encourage public communication, the views and information presented in these comments are not necessarily the views of the council or the members of the public in Milbrae. So with that, let's get started, and if we can have the city clerk call roll and move on to the agenda item.
This is Elena Suazo, city clerk. We will proceed with the roll call. Council member Lee?
Here.
Council member Papin?
Here.
Council member Oliva?
Here.
Vice Mayor Snyder?
Here.
Mayor Hollibur?
Here.
All council members are present.
Okay, and let's move on to the agenda items. So perhaps if we could have the city manager, Mr. Williams, give a brief presentation on the agenda item?
Yes, good evening, Mayor Hollibur. Members of the city council, this is Tom Williams, city manager of City of Milbrae. As you know, on March 16th of this year, Governor Newsom issued an executive order N29-20, and San Mateo County Health Officer issued an order consistent with the governor's direction that directed all residents of the county to shelter in place affected 12:01 AM on March 17th through 11:59 PM April 7th, 2020. The governor's executive order included not only San Mateo County, but also the city and county of San Francisco, Morret County, Contra Costa County, Salamita County, Santa Clara County, and Santa Cruz County. This order was just to try to stop the spread of COVID-19 by eliminate or eliminating its transmission. It allows people to leave their home for essential services only. This is for groceries, pharmacy, medical, and employees required to conduct essential services. Carrying out the governor's and the county health officer orders will have a significant impact on the city's revenue and ongoing operations to deliver essential services. So the emergency declaration is now needed for the City of Milbrae to access funding, equipment, and supplies from the California State Department of Emergency Services, and also the Federal Emergency Management Association, FEMA. And this will help us assist in the battle against the spread of the coronavirus. By declaring a local emergency, the city has granted powers that will allow us to continue providing vital service during the duration of the emergency and limit the impact of the coronavirus on our community and the city's employees who are on the front lines combating the coronavirus, which is continuing to serve the public and deliver essential services. So there's a resolution that I'd like to briefly go over. Most importantly, under Milbrae Local Code Section 2.25.06086, it provides that in the event a proclamation of a local emergency or the proclamation of a state of emergency by the governor or the director of the state office of emergency services, the director of emergency services may do the following. Make an issue rules and regulations on matters reasonably related to protection of life and property affected by such emergency. Provided, however, such rules and regulations must be confirmed and be early attracted at the time by the city council, which is the purpose for the city to see. Obtain vital supplies, equipment, and such other properties found lacking and needed for the protection of life and property, and to buy them if they are of fair value thereof, and if required immediately, condescend the same on public use. Also required by emergency services, any city officer or employee that in the event of proclamation of the state of emergency in the county in which the city is located or in existence of the state of war or emergency, to command the aid of as many citizens in this community as being necessary in the execution of duty. But first, we shall be entitled to all privileges benefits of communities as provided by state. Or for regular due acts of service of work.
This is worse.
So lastly, the recommendation that the city department, agency, reported under this proclamation, and I would turn it back to the mayor for city council questions of myself. We also have Mr. Bill Riley. He is our emergency operations center manager that's here for questions as well. Mayor? Yes. Well, now, can I- Mr. Riley, if you want to give some comments?
Okay. All right. There's been any phones on? There you go. I was on you. I'm sorry, is Mayor on the set? Mayor, may I ask a question? This is Annie Oliva.
Yes.
So, Tom, I have a question with regards to what this really does.
Can you hold on just one moment?
Sure. Can we hear any? We're not hearing anything. Mayor?
Hold on just one moment. We have some technical difficulties.
Mayor, this is Vice Mayor Snyder. Ask everyone to put their individual phones on mute.
Yes, yes, we're working through that. Just give us one moment, please. Okay, are you ready to proceed?
Recorder has joined the conference. This conference is being recorded.
All right, Bill. Okay, Tom or Bill Riley, are you ready to proceed?
I'm ready.
Okay, all right, go ahead.
Initial report, our Milbrae EOC is on standby status at this time, which is technically known as activation level three, as far as him is concerned. What that means is we have the city manager as the director of emergency services is activated with his existing management team. We don't necessarily bring in extra personnel. Reason for that is we're not in a position where we really have to support ongoing operations beyond our normal business. But we do need, this type of situation is, public information is the most part in support from our operational area. Our operational area, San Mateo County Emergency Operations Center, has been activated and has been for the last two and a half weeks. In that time, they have set up a structure to support the entire county and working in close relationship with county medical, EMS. What has transpired so far, and I'm sure you're aware of all the things, you know, after the Dr. Scott Morrow declared the necess- necessity of staying at home and closed all the businesses, we moved forward with some isolation techniques. It is known that we can't provide our city services without interruption because of the things that, the way we're structured, with the exception of our over-the-counter services, which has have been reduced, and that can be done electronically, and I think that has gone out previously. We have control objectives that's been established through the operational area of Emergency Operations Center, and those are pretty basic, to contain life and safety, to identify and secure equipment as necessary, work with community leaders if routine done. We've had conference calls with the elected officials, of course, city managers and other stakeholders. Again, they're working with the federal, state, and local partners who save care passengers with the ship that was quarantined, and the people that were taken off, and they were transferred, some of the members were taken to San Carlos. With that in mind, we realize that there's other needs for sheltering that may take place. One of the things we're facing right now is the possibility of surge capacity of the hospitals, and if they get impacted, and how they can address the overflows. The thinking at this time is if we get to a point where that becomes more of a problem, they can release some of the ones that are non, or that have been through the process and are just trying to recover. If they get that, they can isolate them separately. And so they're, right now, there's a contracting with hotel, one hotel for sure, and I think those other capacities are doing. They also have some facilities at the events center to take care of some of the other problems we have. They're trying to address the homeless problem as well. Doing other projections to handle with the first responders, should they come down with it and we need to isolate them, also looking in that respect. They're monitoring the 211 system on a whim basis, ensuring the quality of information is provided, and that there's some pre-recorded messages with info on a new shelter in place order, and should be pretty well established by this point. They're establishing a legal hotline and email to provide information for small businesses. Again, the EOC are trying to provide logistical support for EMS needs and for personal protective equipment, which is becoming very scarce. They're coordinating with Public Safety Communications and first responders regarding modified protocols for use potential exposures for the first responders when responding to the public. And it's really important that we keep our people healthy as long as possible, so it's working out quite well, I think. They've established, they're starting to establish a centralized volunteer center to provide support for vulnerable populations. This will take some time to bring up, and volunteer management is really necessary to ensure that we have the people that are capable of providing those services, and also at the same time, providing the training and the equipment to achieve what we're asked them to do. With that, they're trying to use our, already, the volunteers that we have in place at this time, which includes our CERT, our Community Emergency Response Teams, as well as the volunteers in policing and library volunteers. Those members have all been vetted. They have, they are disaster service worker qualified and have basic training, so they can come on board more quickly. Down the road, they might ask for more spontaneous volunteers. They're also looking at establishing the donation management plan, and right now, they're looking at donations for medical equipment, and I think that that might be working out before we see anything else, but that's certainly the need at this time. And then, the same, along with at the beginning, planning for concurrent emergency events, along with what we're experiencing now with the coronavirus, we also have to be prepared for any other event that might occur, earthquake, wildfire, or whatever it might be. So as you can see, there's a lot of things that can happen. Fortunately, within the operational area, we have quite a bit of expertise, and by centralizing a lot of those functions, it is to our advantage. And because it is a widespread event, as we receive worldwide, it makes sense to focus our support through our operational area and support it as best we can. I try to get down there every day as a Milbrae representative to coordinate with the needs that we have, and it has been going fairly smoothly at this point. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Riley. I'm sure that several members, there are probably several questions that people have to ask. So maybe if we can do this one council member at a time. Anybody have questions?
Hi, good morning. This is Annie.
Yes, Councilman Oliva, let's start with you, and you can go through them one by one, and once you're done, let me know.
Okay, a couple of questions. So, should I just hit them all out at once, and then you can hit them one by one?
No, just do them one at a time, and you're the only speaker recognized at this time.
Thank you. So first is, I know there's a little bit of concern among our residents with our first responders, and there's been people that have been pulled over and asked where are they going or what are they doing? Is that something that we could address possibly tonight? And then, secondly-
I can tell you that-
Okay, go ahead.
If you'd like me to, I could respond to that. I said in the briefing with the police chief just the other day, his direction is to work with the public in a positive way, remind people when they're getting too close. The guidelines permit people to be out and to go shopping, exercise, you know, it is not meant to isolate completely where, you know, people aren't able to get out at all. And with that, I think I take it in mind, I have heard rumors of police officers stopping for no apparent reason, and I think that is not the guidelines that were given to the Milbrae Police Bureau. I'm not sure beyond that. I questioned that at operational area of the EOC down there, and they were going to be contact, they said they would contact the highway patrol and other agencies to see what was happening.
Chief Kunkel, I think you're on the line.
I am, sir. Hi, I'm Paul Kunkel, the chief of police services. And just so you know, we cannot make traffic stops without an underlying probable cause offense, which is typically a violation of the California Vehicle Code. We cannot stop people just for being out. During the course of a stop, if an officer or deputy sheriff asks what they're doing out, I think that's acceptable. But we're not pulling people over for no reason just to see why they're out, where they're going, what they're doing. There's four pages of exemptions in the order, and I was very clear with my deputies and my entire bureau that if we do see an obvious violation that we have to stop for, I would like our tone at this point to be education and not enforcement. Enforcement may be necessary, and I'm not aversive in writing tickets, but we are not pulling people over for nothing to ask them why they're out, why they're being stopped. We record every traffic stop in the car, and our deputies all wear body worn cameras. This is also being, I've heard this from different patrol bureaus and different police departments, actually. The people hear this is happening, and I don't know where. I've also seen it on social media, so I'm not sure if this is something that's going around. But if there's someone who specifically thinks they have, I would encourage them to contact the police bureau and me in particular, Paul Kunkel, K-U-N-K-E-L, and we'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, chief. With regards to people that are, this sounds so ridiculous, but it's honest to God truth, people that are selling Purell and toilet paper and paper products on the street, pulling people over, saying, "Do you need anything of this sort?" How would you want them to react to that?
I have not heard or seen any of that yet. None of them reported us. If they do, just call us, and we'll go out and see if we can find who's selling that stuff on the street. Again, that's more of a kind of a business issue than a criminal one, but a piece-
It has happened, so just call you, tell them to call you directly.
Call the police bureau, and we'll send a deputy out. And what we're gonna want is, we're gonna have the same thing, a location, description-
We record every traffic stop in the car and our deputies all wear body worn cameras. This is also being, I've heard this from different patrol bureaus and different police departments, actually. The people hear this is happening and I don't know where. I'm also seeing it on social media, so I'm not sure if this is something that's going around. But if there's someone who specifically thinks they have, I would encourage them to contact the police bureau and me in particular, Paul Kunkel, K-U-N-K-E-L, and we'll get to the bottom of it.
Thank you, Chief. With regards to people that are, this is, sounds so ridiculous, but it's honest to God truth. People that are selling Purell and toilet paper and paper products on the street, pulling people over saying, "Do you need anything?" of this sort. How would you want them to react to that?
I have not heard or seen any of that yet. None of them reported us. If they do, just call us and we'll go out and see if we can find who's selling that stuff on the street. Again, it's more of a kind of a business issue than a criminal one, but a...
It has happened, so just call you, tell them to call you directly.
Call the police bureau and we'll send a deputy out. And what we're gonna want is we're gonna have the same thing. A location, description, the type of car the person's in, if they can grab a license plate. Stuff that's gonna help us track the person down so we can contact them.
Thank you. And then my last question here is...
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. Gina Pappan.
Sure, yes. Just if you have a follow up to that, go ahead, but we're recognizing one speaker at a time.
Yes, I do. Yes, the follow up is that we have been informed that the grocery stores and the, all the stores in our region are being regularly supplied with all kinds of items. The grocery association, the stream of our food supply is consistent and everything will be restocked on a regular basis. And I think that's the message we need to get out. Thank you.
And also the stores, this is Councilman Wayne Lee. The stores are also limiting the amount of purchases so that the stores don't get empty. Like for instance, Trader Joe's, only allowing people to buy two, two of each item.
Yes.
Yeah, and I believe... Yeah, and I follow up on that. I'm sure that we're, we're in tune to all this and we all know that it's not really the supply, but it's the stocking, if you were on the call today, that seems to be the issue. So I understand all that, but these, these are real, real questions that are, and experiences actually, that I've come through to what's going on out there. Okay, my last question would be to Tom, to declare state of an emergency with our city. Could you please explain to everybody that this is for the future of what we'd be able to reclaim with any losses? Because I think that, including myself, it's like, what, what does this do to us? By, by, what's the realistic that, I guess, the Reader's Digest version of what you read that was a little bit to the public of what we will do tonight by acknowledging that we are gonna be at a state of emergency?
Again, this is Tom Williams, City Manager here at the City of Millbrae. So a declaration of a local state of emergency will allow us to continue operating, knowing that the governor's order, people staying in place with the objective of not going out except for essential services will have a significant fiscal impact on the city and our ability to continue to perform a simple. So by declaring emergency, we now become eligible for reimbursement by the State of California and through FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management of this, of the federal government. So this is a, in essence, a protective measure for the city fiscally to ensure that we can get reimbursed for all of our efforts and impacts of this emergency handed down by, and the governor's directive to make sure that we can reclaim any of our costs associated with control of the coronavirus.
Tom? Annie, this is Joan Casman, City Attorney.
Uh huh.
Can you hear me? There's a, there's a subsidiary effect of the emergency declaration. And that is also to kind of relieve certain formalities and procedures if the city needs to procure items, health related, safety related, to protect our employees. There is an ability within, under an emergency to, you know, undertake the activities you need that might otherwise be subject to more formal procedures when you're not in an emergency. And of course, Tom would...
So how, so that, that puts Tom in charge as being like the procuring cause, like the, the go to guy?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, awesome.
He's the emergency director. And so he, he does, under an emergency declaration, have some accelerated, some enhanced authority to get done, which may need to be done in a more extraordinary fashion than under normal times. I don't know when we'll see normal times again. But it's really important, I think, to give the city the ability to be nimble.
So, and would that, would that apply to like martial law? Which is like hopefully never gonna come into effect. But would that be something that Tom would be able to declare? Or that would...
No, I mean, something like that would come back to the council.
Is that martial lebo law?
This is more...
No, no, no.
I mean, this is, this is giving Tom the ability for the city to, to react to the crisis and being able to pre, to offer the services it's already offering, but in a climate of this emergency in a more nimble fashion.
Perfect, thank you, Joan.
Councilman Wayne Lee, a follow up question then is that, so at the end of emergency, the council has to declare the end of emergency or city manager simply says, "We're done"?
Well, I think we will be declaring the end of an emergency.
Who's "we"?
The council.
City council, okay.
So, so, sorry, Ms. Casman, that means there's no sunset to this?
There is no immediate sunset. We will be checking back with you regularly. I, I, I know that the orders have, have an April seventh date. But we, we will be checking with you regularly. You have regular council meetings, you will continue to have those. And Tom, I think is your Director of Emergency Services would be expected to be providing you with updated reports at every meeting as to what's happening. And Mr. O'Reilly, of course, too. But, you know, what is happening with respect to the emergency? How it's affecting the city, the consequences to the services we provide. And, you know, at such a point as we, we no longer need the emergency, we would, we would remove it. We being the council.
Okay.
And I, this is Tom Williams again, I'll just, just, just one more comment. I mean, most of this is for procurement of services and supplies. Instead of coming to the city council through normal courses of action, if we need to procure something rapidly that exceeds my authority for purchasing, this allows me to do that. I would then follow back up, you know, if it gets to that point, with a daily report to the city council as to what activities occurred, what we did and why we had to do it. Bill, Riley and myself, as well as County EOC, are in communication every hour. I mean, it's, it's, we're in constant communication, so I will keep the council informed.
Mr. Mayor, this is Joan again. Just to let you know that, that the declaration ordinance itself says that the local emergency is deemed to continue to exist until its termination is proclaimed by the city council.
Okay, so maybe we can, you know, monitor the situation and when we feel it's appropriate, terminate the order.
Correct.
Uh, this is Mayor, Councilman.
Yes, Councilman Lee, you're, yes, and then would you like to be recognized if you have any additional questions?
Yeah, I have, I have a few things.
Okay, go ahead.
I just wanted to also say that, also want to say the mayor and the vice mayor and some of the council members are monitoring a regular county briefing for the public to know that we're, we're also keeping track of what's going on in the county and the state. Okay, so for the resolution, I was reading the resolution on the third whereas, where it says, whereas the United States has confirmed case of individual has severe acute respiratory illness caused by the new Corona COVID nineteen or the virus that's first detected in Wuhan, Hubei province, People's Republic of China, quote China. Given, given the, given that the amount of attacks and vitriol towards Asians, I would like to suggest that we remove that Wuhan that was first detected in. We don't need to say that, we know where it came from. I'm not denying where it came from, but I'm just concerned about the message we're sending.
Okay.
Having to point it out.
So we could take out the reference to the place and just say, "Which was first detected on December thirty first, twenty nineteen"? Is that what you would like? Okay.
Yes, please.
Yep, no problem.
Okay, you have other questions?
That concludes my comments for now, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that concludes my comments for now, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, anyone else, Councilman Pappan or Vice Mayor Schneider?
Mayor, I'm just waiting for you to call us, so if you want...
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, this is Vice Mayor Schneider. This is to Bill Riley. You referenced the two one one system. The last information I received on two one one is, could you elaborate more what the public can do with two one one? But what was said three, two days ago was, the callback wait time was over an hour. They were hiring more staff or transferring more county staff over and training them in the hope to get the wait time down and that the window for that was gonna be twenty four or forty eight hours. Are they now fully staffed and, and what is their answering phone call time? Time on hold.
At today's, today's meeting, we discussed that. And I understand two one one system now, the wait time is six minutes. And I think the average call is only last, you know, two and a half minutes or something like that. Four minutes, about four minutes, yeah. So it's, it's improved and I think they're still working to improve it even more, so it's getting better.
Excellent. Next question. When I called, which was a few hours after that first announcement that it had gone live, I asked one question that they could answer and one question that they needed to get back. It's been seventy two hours, they haven't gotten back. That's okay. My question is, if for those questions that they do not have answers for, answers from the public, what is the process that they're using to get the answer? And are they posting them in an FAQ and if so, what website?
That's what they're using to build the FAQs, as far as I understand it. And they, they have been pretty, pretty adamant about answering the questions that come up. They're, you have, I think, for the public to understand, this is something we've never been through before. So it's a lot of things that are occurring that they don't have direct answers to at that time. And especially with the, some of the call takers, as, you know, we bring them in and train them, they certainly not all up to speed, so there are some, you know, might be some problems with that. But they are getting better as they do that and the information is improving. But the FAQ should be improving as we go through because as more and more calls come in and they see the repetitiveness of some of the information, they can put it out and push it out and beyond that in some of their public information announcements.
Perfect. As somebody who worked the call center for five years, I, I well understand what they're under. For the public who might be listening in, FAQ is frequently asked questions. And the reason to do FAQs is to try to standardize so that everybody is getting the same information in the purest, most accurate form. The last question I would say, because these people are working at two one one from all over the county, it would be helpful if, are they located at the ROC, the Regional Operation Center?
Uh, I don't know. I do not know where they house that, that phone bank.
Okay, well, if they had some maps and they could get a little familiarity with communities, that would be helpful. It'll make the public feel calmer when they address them. It's the same thing when we went to regional dispatching. The dispatchers may be from South County and not familiar with North County. And it makes a user, even me, a little less confident when I don't get the feeling that they know where I am. So maps can be very helpful.
I do know with the technology that they built into the, the new Regional Operations Center, a lot of that information is available and there's a lot of maps around there. So I would be surprised if they did not have that in the call center.
Okay, they didn't have it when I called the first day, so just bringing that up.
Okay, I'll follow up on that. I will follow up on that.
Last question. In terms of, of Councilman Lee's request for the resolution, I'm okay with that. I actually at a distance spoke to some UPS drivers. This gentleman happened to be Asian. He had been getting some bad experiences. My mailman is Asian and he is just happy go lucky and said everybody's been treating him fine. But, yeah, sensitivity to any potential, I hate to use the word hate crime, but I think that makes good sense. The, I think, I, I have other questions, Mayor. Over email, we talked about the ability to talk about keeping residents happy, but that's not an agenda item. So if you remember that, tell me if this is not the time to talk about it and it can be the next time, in which case I think I'm done.
You know, if you have specific ideas, you know, feel free to bring them up. I think it would be okay at this time.
Okay, then Councilman Lee and I were talking about our elderly parents. And then I, I ran it, we were on the phone. I talked about a couple of things that might keep our residents moving forward and help the city at the same time. And so I passed that over to the mayor and mayor said, "Sure." Just getting this out there. And so what, for example, one idea is, we're all at home or a good number of us are at home. And I would like to move forward with a helpful hint on how everybody can get their homes ready for the fire season. And I'll elaborate more of this, but I never got back to Wayne on this. Wayne, the mayor gave permission for you and I to work on a couple of these things if you and I want to work together on them, which I guess is a way of making a subcommittee.
Great, okay, let's, let's talk about it later.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Wayne.
Sure, okay. Now, Councilwoman Pappan, do you have any questions or comments?
Um, just if we could, Mr. Mayor, I don't know what our website's looking like, but if, if we can refer people to the county website and the latest... Okay, great, that, that would be my concern is all there. And just remind everybody to be kind to one another and we will get through this. Just being careful and considerate. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm sorry, Aunt Schneider, question for you.
Yes.
Question. I didn't do it today, but typically every day I check the health website, the county website, the county OES website and the county website. And I haven't found that their information is up to speed. And I know that on the elected official briefing, I haven't been able to get on the call the last two days, but at the briefing, other council members from other cities have asked for one website. Do we know if they are moving in a direction of one website with all the information?
Mayor, if I might interject, this is Annie. I was on the briefing today and the website, they asked everybody to please look at it because they're quite proud that they have made quite an accomplishment in the last couple of days. So the county website is looking good.
Okay, yeah, I haven't seen it the last, you know, two days or so, so I wouldn't be able to say. But yeah, I did hear that comment brought up a couple of times. Website was not entirely clear and, and easy to find information on, but I hope they have fixed it.
And they were, they were actually asking for suggestions, if there was any more suggestions, because they, they would like to be the go to website.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Councilman Lee. I saw, can I ask you to also kind of do a quick summary for those people listening at home to, to direct them to some of the many public informations that you've been giving periodically online? Can you summarize that for our audience?
Yeah, sure, those are all available on the city website under the news section. I've done a couple of video PSAs with MCTV. And I believe we've also put out, I think, three written updates, providing the latest information. These things are changing very fast. So, you know, I'll put something out and then a couple of days later, it will already be obsolete. So we're trying to stay on top of it and, you know, running all, everything through the county EOC to make sure that, that we're providing accurate information. So, yeah, please, please look at the city website, cityofmillbrae.com. Thank you for setting that up, by the way, to our IT staff. Yeah, cityofmillbrae.com for the latest information that we have. Yes, Councilman Pappan, and sorry, you were cut off there, so you have the floor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Your public service announcements have been very helpful. Thank you very, very much and also the city manager's contribution there. If we could also do and encourage our residents that although the restaurants are not open and several businesses are not takeout, is really appreciated to keep the businesses going locally and also to keep people employed. I think that's really important and if we can encourage that, that would be a great, great way to keep people engaged.
available at City Hall? Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Okay, so, in terms of the services, the city facilities for entry to the public are closed, but we continue to provide essential services via online emails to departments, telephone numbers to departments. Our essential services are up and running, of course, administration, city manager's office, public safety, that's pollution and fire. We need to make sure, and we continue to make sure, that we have reliable and operable infrastructure in our public works departments. That's water flowing and tested, sewer facilities, storm drain, street repair, emergency repair work for street trees. So, we're continuing to, you know, operate as much as normal in terms of our essential services. Our building permit and inspection services are limited to residential development that's currently under construction and commercial buildings that are in their final phase to ensure health and safety, and, you know, in case a commercial building has an electrical permit or something like that, we are moving forward to go ahead and continue to provide building inspection services to ensure the health, safety of buildings. Residential construction per the governor's order is exempt under certain protocols. We're working with our contractors to make sure that those protocols are in place, and our building inspection and project managers out in the field assigned to those projects have all been trained and educated on what that is and what to do. If anyone has an emergency repair for a water heater or an HVAC system, our information for planned submittals and building inspection requests are available online on the city's website. Also, our finance department continues to be operable, accounts receivable, accounts payable, water and sewer billings, and other vital city financial functions are all operational. In terms of what we're doing community-wide, today, we released two important programs. One is a list of our businesses, our restaurants, that are operating to provide pickup and delivery, so you can visit our website and get a list. We want that list to continue to grow. We're asking for people that know of businesses that remain open, restaurants that remain open, for pickup and delivery, that we get them on the list. We have telephone numbers that people can call for each of those restaurants that have signed up. Also, we've introduced today a wellness signup program for seniors that people can go on our website. This is also pushed out on social media, that if anyone knows a resident or community member that's 65 or older that has special needs, please sign up that person. We will coordinate them with the county's EOC and the programs that they have in place centrally to make sure that those residents receive meals, food delivery, medication that's as needed, but we need to get that listing of everyone so we can work closely with the county at central command to make sure that all of our residents and community members are being served. So, look for those two things, please sign up. And if you have any questions, also on our website, we do have a COVID-19 icon that has all the links to CDC and to the county, as well as local information from us. So, we are getting information pumped out daily and doing everything we can to support the community and our local businesses. And that's it, Mayor. Unless there are any other questions.
Okay.
Here I have questions.
Yes, Vice Mayor Schneider.
Tom, the 65 age and older perfectly agree with, but what about families with special needs? Are they included in-
Yes, the vulnerable, yes, special needs are included, so it's both 65 and special needs. And that's not to say that if somebody knows an elderly person that, you know, 63 or 64 that may need help, maybe a single household, we will take that as well. The reason why it's 65 is that's the most vulnerable population, 65 and older, that the directive of the county medical officer is really have those people sheltered in place, and that, you know, we really don't let them leaving their homes.
If I might add to that, this is a good time to reinforce the fact, especially to the public, as we do to our CERT program, is now's the time to take care of your neighbors, and neighbors taking care of neighbors is certainly the most responsive. You're going to get, you know, certainly the care is there, so if people are able to do that, check on a neighbor they haven't seen or offer help if possible, following our distancing and everything else, we're supposed to follow through the protocols, but it certainly makes sense to reinforce that at this time.
Mayor? Mayor and Ann.
Okay. Yes, go ahead.
Gina or Ann?
No, I'm Annie.
Oh, Annie, sorry, Annie. Annie or-
Yeah, Councilwoman Oliva, you have the floor.
Okay, so, Bill, thank you very much for saying that, and what we've done in our neighborhood, and I would like to extend this to my council members and our city manager and yourself as well, like you just elaborated, to we, on our block, we're very mixed, from young families to single elderly people, and at 5 o'clock, if everybody could just- what we've done, I'm not saying that we need to put this into place for everybody, but everybody come out in front at 5 o'clock and stay the distance, but stay on the driveway and just say that everybody's good and everybody's fine. It sounds very simple and very silly, but it has made a very, very nice camaraderie, and there, you'd be surprised of what you hear from your neighbors, you know? Some days are good and some days are bad, and it's only been a few days. So, I would love to share the success that we've had on hacienda, and if you guys could all, like, contribute to your own blocks and do something positive to reach out to your neighbor, like Bill said. It's so important. And Wayne and Ann, I know you have elderly mothers. Me too. And my mom is not able to come into the house. It's been very, very difficult. So, we have got to figure out a new way to reach these people that are so important, and I hope my mom's neighbors are going to be able to take care of that as well for her. So, please, you guys, if we could just come, like, together and make sure that everybody's okay in their houses, this is more than just a virus.
Mr. Mayor, this is Gina Pappen.
Yes, Councilwoman Pappen, and then we'll go to public comment.
Yes, and along those lines, the city of Foster City, I believe, is doing that and encouraging their neighbors. I'm going to be encouraging my neighbors too, that, you know, just pop outside at 5 o'clock and go to the driveway, kind of wave to another, and really improve your, just make sure we're checking on everybody. So, I think that's a wonderful idea, and I would encourage others to do so. I'm going to do that, and I think Councilmember Lee too. So, thank you, Annie, for bringing that up. I do think it's great.
Mayor, hey, you guys-
Good idea. Um, okay, City Clerk Swazo, can, do we have any emails that came in for public comment by the 6:30 deadline?
This is Elena Swazo, City Clerk. We received one email comment. I will go ahead and read it. The email is from Natasha Wong, received at 6:11 PM. The message is, "There is echoing on the phone when the speaker speaks." That is the end of the message.
Okay, so, we're not sure who the, which speaker, if there's one speaker specifically or just in general, but, you know, this is the first time we're doing these remote meetings, and if we have another one, we will learn from this and hope to improve upon it. Okay.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I did have a comment, and this might be to Willie-
Okay, Vice Mayor Schneider, and then Councilman Lee, and then we'll call the question.
Okay. Back to what Annie said, I think that sounds lovely. Here is, and I haven't been able to get an answer from the county on this, when there are, people like me, I'm 62, people like Wayne, whatever, however age his is, when we've got elders at home, it is hard to know what we might be bringing back into the home. It'll, I would love clear guidance. So, when I went shopping yesterday, I went shopping Saturday, the experience was much different in terms of how crowded and standing in line, but I still came home and changed clothes, put the bags, I went to disposable bags so that I wasn't tracking anything, and I put everything away as opposed to my mother doing it, who is 92 and a half with COPD. I would love to see some more detailed guidelines of how those of us who have elderly at home, any additional precautions we may be taking. That said, I think we're going to get some updated health information from Italy on it is not just the older people that might be having stronger illnesses, but at least right now, clarification of how caretakers who are living in the home can protect the people most at risk.
Thank you. It's Councilman Lee. I just want to make the motion to approve the declaration of emergency due to the COVID-19 outbreak.
Councilmember Pappen, second. Thank you.
Okay. Maybe if the city clerk can do a roll call vote, please?
This is City Clerk Elena Swazo. Please provide your votes. Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Pappen?
Yes.
Councilmember Oliva?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Schneider?
Yes.
Mayor Holliver?
Aye.
The resolution proclaiming a local emergency passed unanimously.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for accommodating this special meeting. Just so the public knows, our regularly scheduled meeting of March 24th will be canceled. We are focusing on essential business at this time, and obviously, the COVID-19 response is taking up, I would say, the vast majority of the city manager's time at this point. Tom, correct me if I'm wrong, but if we have any other essential business, essential deadlines, and rec centers moving ahead with a tight timeline, we will likely call another special meeting and again do it remotely. So, please, you know, for those members of the public following along, please follow our city website for the latest news and if any other meetings are happening. Okay, so, thank you all, and we will adjourn for the evening, and we will reconvene at a time to be determined. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, and Tom.
Thank you, everybody.